So if you want to mute it.
You got me Nate?
Got you Larry.
Ten four.
I'm guessing Gary is Al Powell.
Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order and we'll ask if you, unless you're speaking, if you could mute your, your device. So we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Roll call.
Bush?
Here.
Chambers?
Present.
Dunn?
Here.
Heisner?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
I'm here.
Sullivan?
Is this Gary?
That's Gary.
Had to switch devices.
Okay, gotcha Gary.
So we just did roll call, so you're good Gary?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, two, meeting tonight, we are gonna do the election of officers. So nominations will be accepted and officers elected in the following order, President, Vice President, Clerk and Treasurer. Each officer shall serve a term of one year. Balloting for any of the four above mentioned officers shall continue until a clear majority is received.
Are you looking for nominations Nate?
Yes, we're gonna take, yes, we'll take nominations for President.
I move that Nate Chambers is our President for the upcoming year.
I'll second that nomination.
Uh, who wish to close the nominations?
I make a motion, we close the nominations.
I'll second that.
So Nate is...
Yeah, without a vote then Nate will end up being the President for the upcoming year.
Alright, thank you fellow board members. And now we'll take nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Andy Bush for Vice President.
I'll nominate Dr. Dunn as Vice President.
I think we need a second.
Do we, was that we need a second on the first nomination?
I'm gonna decline the nomination and second Dr. Dunn.
Thank you Andy.
Sorry Ev.
That's okay.
Gary nominated, Gary nominated Dr. Dunn.
Dr. Dunn, and second by Andy Bush.
I move the nominations are closed.
I second it.
So Dr. Dunn will be the Vice President of the Board for the next year.
I accept, thank you.
Uh, okay, let's go into the Clerk. Any nominations for Clerk?
I'll nominate Dr. Lindsay if he'll take it again.
I would, yeah.
Let's go a second.
Second from Dunn.
Do we wish to close the nominations?
I move that we close the nominations.
I accept, thanks.
And Dunn to Treasurer, any nominations for Treasurer? Current Treasurer is Larry Steffes.
I'll nominate Larry Steffes.
Thank you Andy.
Gary Sullivan, second that.
Do we wish to close the nominations for Treasurer?
I make a motion, we close the nominations for Treasurer.
I'll second it.
Nomination's closed.
I accept.
Alright, uh, now we'll take, um, the appointment of the Secretary. Board will appoint a Secretary each year. The Secretary is an employee of the District and will not be a member of the Board. Current Secretary is Angie Schubert.
I nominate Angie Schubert as our Secretary for the upcoming year.
I'll second it.
Do we wish to close the nomination?
I move that we close the nominations.
I'll second that. That was Dunn, second. Joni's motion.
Okay, so now we are going to establish the board meeting. We're gonna establish both the meeting dates and times for future regular, regularly scheduled board meetings. Currently, the Board meets the second Monday of the month at 6:30 PM. District recommends the following Mondays for board meetings in 2020, 2021, or 2021. June 8th, July 13th, August 10th, September 14th, October 12th, October 26th, November 9th, December 14th, January 11th, February 8th, March 8th, April 12th, April 26th, May 10th, and June 14th.
The, the two meetings in October, one is to, the second one is to certify the levy. And the two meetings in April, the second meeting is to swear in the new board members after that election. So that's why there's two in those, both of those months.
Are the rest on the second Monday then Mitch?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we keep the meetings as, as presented on the agenda and, uh, the start time is at 6:30. If that's okay with everybody?
Gary Sullivan will second that motion.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
I have a clarification question, uh, from Dunn. How, how is this currently lining up with City Council meetings? And if they do line up, are there, have you heard any plans from City Council to change the date of their meetings for the year?
I've, I've talked with Mayor Bastings and they are moving off of the Mondays. So we should not have any conflicts, um, in the near future. They were, they were presenting that at their last City Council meeting, and I think it would take one more meeting for them to make that official, but they, they will be moving off of the second Monday of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a roll call for that. For the board, the meeting dates.
Steffes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Okay, we're going to the determination of the board member salaries. Currently, the Board receives $600 annually.
If you remember, um, before leaving the Board, President Bastings had brought up, because he was leaving that, he thought maybe you might be interested in increasing your annual, your salaries. As a unified school district, um, you are entitled to either an annual salary or a per meeting salary. That, so it's just a little bit different than, than a common school district, but you can either establish it as yearly salary or a per meeting salary. Um, so there, if there were special meetings or committee meetings or something, you could get paid per meeting, or you get paid annually, as you set this up.
I'll make a motion, we leave the salary at 600.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Mitch, do you have a sense of, um, what comparable districts are paying the board members?
In the, in our local area, I, I do not. I know, I remember, um, remember Bastings, President Bastings had shared, you know, several districts were paying somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars per member, and that the Board President made slightly more. I believe he referenced one district where it was 1,200 and another district where the President might made 1,500. Um, he had shared a newspaper article where all of this information was gathered, but, um, I can certainly reach out to other districts. I, I don't know that this, I don't know that we're really out of line with a lot of other school districts right now, in, in our local area.
Yeah. Uh, shoot, what am I gonna ask? Um, I was reading that, uh, and this could be completely inaccurate, but I was reading that public school districts in Milwaukee were paying five or six figures to board members. Does that sound accurate?
Uh, well, it, it could be. Uh, I, I, you know, it explains some of the financial problems they're having down there, but it won't be the case.
Yeah. Um, just an interesting side, side comment. Um, I was, I, I saw in the news a few years ago that there was a school district that, um, held, held an annual meeting during which the community members in attendance, or in some shape or form, were, were able to vote on, um, what they, what they were gonna pay the board members. And, um, this was in Mount Horv actually, and they actually were upset with how the board members were functioning. And they've, they made a motion to, uh, eliminate their salaries, and it passed in an annual meeting. Uh, I just found that interesting, but I also wanted to just say that because I, um, I feel like the, the best way to determine the final answer to this question is what our community would want to, how, how the community would want to express, um, value to what the Board offers to the school district. You know, I think, uh, on the one hand, obviously, it's a, it's a time consuming job, it's an important job, and I think by and large, the community appreciates what we do. Um, and in that sense, I think assigning some financial compensation is one sign of showing a value of that. But on the other hand, you know, as a, as a Board who's voting on the salary for ourselves, you know, um, and having a fiscal responsibility to the community and the taxpayer, um, and knowing that most of us probably don't do it for the money, you know, it, I question, I, I think you can make a strong argument that, um, the money is a insignificant, plays an insignificant role in the, the level of value we, we see in the, in the position and the appreciation we feel from the community. I don't know if any other, other board members just have any general thoughts on that, or?
I think, um, you know, the process you speak of is common in all common districts where the annual meeting occurs and that the, uh, community sets the, the salaries of the Board. I think it's different with the unified districts. Um, you know, I think, I, I think that, that the magnitude of what we do, um, the importance of it to, you're not gonna be able to put a true value on it and be able to, you know, pay out of the budget what the importance of the position is worth. I think we all do it for, for the district. Um, I think we have to give something because you want to assign it some value, but we just had six people run for three spots. Um, so it's not like we're begging people to get on because, you know, there's just no value to it. So I think we're good where we're at. I wouldn't oppose, um, because of all the extra work the President does do, that part of it, but I certainly, certainly don't need to, um, get behind raising everybody's.
I, I think we're gonna see budget crunches and I, I don't want to be part of the cost to the school district, um, especially with what's gonna happen with the state, um, revenues and, and the society at large. I, I think we should just stay at 600.
You know, I certainly want to be sensitive to board members who are maybe taken from their employment to come to a meeting, or, you know, have to sacrifice some income to come do, especially like a special meeting or something like that. And, uh, that seems like reasonable compo, uh, compensation. Um, and then I just want to remind the Board that kind of the great equalizer, regardless if you feel like we should get paid or not, is that you can, um, you can tell the district that you want to return your salary to the district, um, by submitting a letter or notifying, um, the district. So if you don't feel like you should be paid, you can, uh, return it to the district.
Or you simply don't take it upfront.
Right.
I, I believe that $600 is a fair amount. Typically, it's one full board meeting a month. I know there's a couple committee meetings, but, uh, as it was said earlier, it, uh, we're not doing it for the money. I think we should move on Doug.
If you have a question, okay, we'll call the question.
Okay, uh, Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Steffes?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. I will move into the appointment of the standing committees. Currently, there are four standing committees, the Operations, Policy, Personnel, and the Finance Committee. Though currently, the only committee that has zero members is the Personnel Committee. So is there anybody interested to start off with being the Chair of the Personnel Committee? And I can list the, I can list committees if you guys want me to right now as well, as far as who's on them.
I wouldn't have a problem being the Chair of any committee.
Okay, you would not mind being the Personnel Chair on the Personnel Committee of the Chair?
No, I'll, I'll, I'll do whatever.
Okay. Okay, Gary, you are the Finance Chair currently.
It's okay. I didn't know, I guess I was not quite aware of that, so.
So, are you willing to move positions to Personnel Chair?
If somebody wants to finance, sure.
Okay.
I can move back to Finance Chair.
Sorry, what was that?
Was that Andy that said something?
I would move back to Finance Chair if, if Gary wanted to move to Personnel.
Okay, okay. So we'll do that, we'll go Andy as the Finance Chair. That means Larry, you still, are you still okay at the Vice Chair in the Finance?
I'm okay with that, you bet.
So Gary is Personnel Chair, we need a Vice Chair.
For Personnel.
For Personnel.
I'll take that on.
Interested in?
So Joni will be Vice Chair. And currently, for the Policy Committee, uh, Dr. Lindsay is the Chair, Gary is the Vice Chair, Operations is myself as a Chair, and Dunn as Vice Chair. Is there any discussion or opposition to anything on those chairs up around the committees?
On the Operations, Nate, you were, you were the Chair, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Andy, would you assume the Operations Chair for this term?
I, I could, I don't, it seems like it, it seems to me with the building project going on, it maybe should be somebody who can attend the Thursday afternoon meetings or the, the meetings that occur, um, currently during the day when I can't.
I'm, I'm more than willing to stay on that Chair, that's not a problem. My, my schedule can be flexible, so I can, I can manage the Operations Chair for the building, especially for the building part of the project.
Well, I think that's a good idea Nate, thanks.
Thank you Nate.
Yeah.
Alright. You can put me down as, who was Vice Chair of the Operations?
Operations is Dr. Dunn for the Vice Chair.
Are you okay with that again this term, Dr. Dunn?
I'm okay with that. Um, I will say, given what, given what Andy said, I, I can't promise I can make any Thursday afternoon meetings if the Operations Committee is expected to attend, but I know that Nate at least has, at least Nate on the Board has been attending those core meetings. Is that correct Nate?
Correct, we haven't had any in a while, but yes, correct.
Is, is it just you who's been there? From the Board?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd be willing to, to, uh, switch committees if the Board felt like, um, it would be important for the, for two representatives of the Board to?
If you want, Mr. Dunn, um, I could be the Vice Chair of the Operations if you want to be the Vice Chair of the Policy.
Okay, that's okay with me.
Let's do that.
Gary and Dunn swap, okay? Okay, so, you, I'll read down the committees right now. For the Operations, myself as the Chair, Sullivan as Vice Chair, Policy, Dr. Lindsay as Chair, Dr. Dunn as Vice Chair, Personnel, Sullivan for the Chair, Heisner for Vice Chair, Finance, Andy Bush for the Chair, and Steffes for the Vice Chair. Uh, we have a motion to approve the committees.
I make a motion that we approve the committees.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just want to point out, you know, for anybody that's not aware that we shifted to the Chair-Vice Chair a couple years ago and essentially put everybody on all of the committees. And so anytime there's a committee meeting, everybody is invited as a member of the committee, um, to attend as a, you know, voting member for recommendations.
Does that mean that every committee meeting has to have a notice of quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we will move into the appointment of the CISA III delegate. Wait, oh, we're gonna vote for this, or we're sorry, we're gonna vote. Okay, Angie, roll call please.
Steffes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. And now we'll move into the appointment of the CISA III delegate. Okay, uh, currently, I am the CISA delegate, so. Does anybody else wish to be the CISA III delegate?
You really look like a CISA III delegate Nate, I think you ought to keep it.
I would, uh. I can, I, I, I'm fine. I'm fine with keeping that if nobody else is interested. Am I fine with everybody?
I'm certainly not in a position to volunteer. Um, I don't fully grasp what's required, but I see that you've already taken on the President, as President of the Board, and you're chairing the Operations Committee, which is gonna be huge in a year when we're remodeling the school. Do you have the, do you have the capacity? Do you really want to take this on, or do you want to offload it to somebody?
I would be fine either way, I will tell you that. I, it's, it's not that much that, there's, so.
Okay.
I can stay there, that's fine. Unless you're interested Joni?
No, no, I'd like to get a better understanding of exactly how things work before I do anything of that nature.
Okay. I will maintain that rule and.
A lot of background noise. If you could mute yourself please. If you're not speaking, please mute yourself.
Is that, is that coming from me Mitch?
I, I don't know who it's coming from. I can't tell where the, where the noise is, but it sounds like a lot of, a lot of equipment being shuffled around on a table or a desk or something.
That probably was me. I had to switch devices, sorry about that Mitch. Well, uh, yeah, we'll work with it.
Alright, sorry about that. Okay, we will move into the appointment of the WASB delegate. Uh, currently, uh, that is Dr. Dunn.
I can continue doing that.
Okay. Any discussion or opposition? Okay, we're just gonna, we're not gonna vote on these. Okay, now we're gonna go to talk about the Sunshine Fund. The District will donate to the Mineral Point Excellence and Education Endowment Fund in honor of a former staff member or father, mothers of a staff member on behalf of the Board Administrative Team. Please consider contributing $20 to replenish the Sunshine Fund. Uh, we, you can send that to the school, um, Angie?
Yep.
Or if you see her in person. So, uh. Yeah, six feet, so, so. So we're going to Communications, uh, Board Communications received. Anybody receive any citizen communications or concerns?
I get the question all the time, when are they gonna start the elementary school?
Stuff's happening, I drove past today.
Trees are down.
Yeah, there, I do, there's a section in the information discussion, I'll try to touch on, on that in the, in, in a future section here on tonight's board meeting.
Okay.
I, I got a question. Has, um, has there been any communication regarding the salaries increases that we voted on last month's meeting? Has there, has there been anybody reach out and thank the Board or the taxpayers for these increases at all?
Not to me, no.
I guess I kind of find myself disappointed as we talked last month. These times of uncertainty that we live in, and Mr. Dunn even echoed what I said there, that we can't even get a simple thank you for these, uh, these raises. And the people that are paying the taxes, some of these people are severely hurting right now. And I, I just have a hard time grasping that we couldn't even get a simple thank you is all. And I'm a little disappointed in that.
Alright, any citizen communications? Nothing? Okay. Uh, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sorry, uh, I'll, I'll move to approve both the regular and special minutes, please.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Oh, they look good to me.
Okay, do we need to roll on that? Okay, we'll take a roll on that.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stephanus?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Okay, we'll move into items for information and discussion.
So the preliminary budget up here are some notations from, from Marsh and myself. We did get some information and some updates since our last meeting. We got an increase in high cost aid. It was for the students that we were working with and it comes at the end of the school year. So Angela Klein reported what our high cost aid was, so it made some adjustments in the transfer fund 10 to fund 27. So we were able to transfer less money there due to the high cost aid offsetting some of those costs. We had, Mr. Renwick, excuse me, submitted some cuts from the elementary budget requests. There were some increases in what the busing would be increased next year, which is the normal increase. Then we made technology cuts, high school cuts. We have added four new staff members. We had three of the salaries in that we knew for sure. The fourth salary, Marsh and I just kind of put a median ballpark salary in. We included family insurance for all four staff members. We don't believe all four will be taking family insurance, but I would rather estimate our expenses on the high side. So that through all of those changes right now, we are looking at a $10,000 surplus on next year's budget. We're still making cuts. I know Ms. Dahl is looking at the middle school and the athletics programs on some of the cuts. My goal is to get that surplus north of $30,000, and if I can get it closer to $50,000, we would be able to sustain a reduction in state aid next year. So right now, if the state aid was held at zero, because in the biennium, we are, by law, the biennium says we're supposed to get $179 more per pupil in aid. And they're looking at, one of the suggestions is that you go as a $0 increase. So if we get a $0 increase, we would still be, we would be sitting at that $10,000 surplus. Some of the people with good connections inside the capital in Madison recommend that a budget repair bill is going to come and you might want to prepare a budget that looks at maybe a reduction of, of $50 per pupil. If I can get to $35,000 as a surplus, we can absorb that $50 reduction without any other impact anywhere in the budget. So making some cuts out of budget requests for next year, making some additional purchases for things for next year out of some of the surplus monies. Because if you look, we, we did not pay for any extracurricular bus trips. There were no field trips. There were no sporting events that we paid busing for, so all of that money we get recuperated. We did not pay for umpires for any of our softball or baseball. So all of that money that was budgeted stays in the district. So we're looking to use those dollars yet to kind of help spend down some of the budget requests for next year and build up that surplus. So again, my, my goal would be to come to you in October, and hopefully we would know by October what the state was going to do in the budget repair bill. But, but that's where my focus is, is that we're going to get a reduction in aid and I'm trying to prepare us to be able to absorb that and not have to do anything else, not have to ask taxpayers for more money, not have to cut any other things that we deem to be essential for next year's education.
Okay, good work, Mitch.
Thank you. Any, any other questions on, on the budget surplus? And again, you'll be, you'll be certifying the levy and setting the budget finally in its final rendition at the end of October.
The, the fourth teacher that was not budgeted for, that is the middle school elementary, uh, language arts teacher, correct?
Correct. We had, we had three retirements.
Yep.
We, we replaced them and then at one of the last board meetings, there was a request to add this person. So i- in doing the, a, a rough dollar for dollar, what the three retirement salaries were, two of them took the alternative benefit plan, one took the family insurance. So I, I totaled that dollar amount and then, like I said, we, we knew three of the salaries. We estimated on the fourth one. I now had the fourth one and estimated a family insurance and while, while not a savings, adding that fourth position only, only cost us, and I say only, it's not a dollar amount. I would wish to write out of my checkbook, but it was, it was a $25,000 increase. So we got four teachers replacing three teachers for only an additional $25,000. I, I believe that that was, uh, we were fortunate to be able to get that in place and I, I know the building principals at this level in that curricular area are very, very happy for that support.
So we made the decision to add that teacher. When that decision was made, the world looked a little different. Things have changed pretty dramatically. Is, are we in a position to revisit the decision to add that teacher and see if that still makes sense? Given the way the world has changed in the last 45 days, probably more like 60 days?
I can, I, I can, I can tell you this, Joni, we got to that point of hiring that position due to the test scores that we were seeing in the middle school area. So that is why we decided to go that route. I guess I understand your question. And I don't know if it's something we revisit or not, but I, I guess I think we stick with it is my, my thought.
That, that, that staff position, the approval of that staff position is coming up later on the agenda for, for final approval. I know that it, as, as a teacher, you never give up your current job to take the next job until that board says yes and puts their stamp on it. You know, to Gary's point, I know the middle school and high school principals and they're both on, they may wish to speak to that. But, but to Gary's point, yes, it was, it, it was a different time, but it was also to have a more positive impact on the English and reading scores and support our students both on the state test, the Ford exam, and that, that ability to bounce into the high school. So it's a seven, 12 license, so you know, it helped improve some of our struggling readers in ACT and college preparedness as well. So it was, it was a request at a, at a different time, different budget circumstances. But I would say that the need has not changed at all.
Okay. Thank you for that commentary. That helps.
Okay.
This is, this is done. I just want to add, I mean, I, I think Joni asked a really fair question that, that should be asked. But I, I agree with Gary and Mitch, and I just wanted to add, I think that we should look at that position a little more seriously if we were looking at a deficit projected right now, or if, if Mitch wasn't confident that we could get to a place where we could absorb a $50 per pupil decrease without changing, you know, our current positions or sacrificing anything else that we would deem essential. So it, you know, Mitch, it sounds like from your initial budget summary that you feel pretty confident we can get to a $35,000 surplus, let's say, without making a lot of essential sacrifices and that would be kind of a worst case scenario and, and that, that includes this new position, correct?
That, that is correct. That, that new position is figured in this, this budget scenario as it sits right now. So yes, you know, between now and the end of this fiscal year, if we're able to make few additional purchases with some of that surplus money, that, that surplus for next year will continue to increase and get to that 30, 40, $50,000 surplus hopefully, which would allow us then to, you know, add back in. And we have, we have people that have, you know, put in their budgets, I want to go see Doug Reeves, or I want to go see Rick Rumley, and I put that money in my classroom budget because they, these are great educational leaders and they're going to be in CISA or Madison or someplace and we're looking at kind of pulling those things back right now due to the fact we have no idea what kind of conferences will be offered, you know, next year when, when the fall rolls around and maybe they won't be having those things. Maybe it'll be a virtual conference and, and the cost goes from $250 down to $100. So we're looking at making those kinds of shifts and if possible, you know, in essence, kind of hold that budget money. So if that conference happens and we still deem it to be a, a, a very worthwhile conference to send people to, we would have the money available to do that. So yes, I'm looking at finding ways to, to get that surplus, handle a reduction in aid and have the smallest absolute minute impact on the education in the classroom.
And just a budget note, we will have, I'll get with Larry and find a date that, that works with his schedule. We will have the, the finance committee meeting prior to the June budget approval where we dig in more line by line. So just for everybody, a reminder, if you see a finance committee meeting posted, it will be the one where we, we get the, the full budget from Mitch and kind of dig in and look into the changes more line by line than, than big picture right here. So that'll be, that'll be something that, that gets posted here prior to the June meeting. Probably review fund 46 and see where we're at balance wise compared to approved encumbrances and see what's, what's left there. But I will, I will get with Larry and hopefully find a, a rain day or two and see what the Almanack says and and get something scheduled.
Good idea. Mitch, I do have one question. Under salaries and benefits, you're all in with all the cost of living increase from last month. The, uh, the salary step schedule that reflects the increases there and the four new staff hires?
Yes, it does.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, so we feel, we feel very comfortable as of 7:12 PM today, but that's our, those are our budget numbers right now. So with, with more work, you know, for the, for the building administrators and myself, we will get that surplus number up where I would like it to be, to be able to handle any other cut that might come from the state in state aid.
One, one more question, Mitch. Under property taxes, I see, oh, there's an increase of, uh, 400, what is it, 450,000-ish? Is that the result of the referendum monies? The referendum tax increases, I should say?
The, the general fund increase or the referendum debt service?
Well, the net, the net property tax increase, a very top line item under revenue.
Yeah.
An increase of 400 plus thousand.
That is based on information that's given to Marsha, estimates on the value of the property. So that's what, that's the number that's basically in our, in our budget sheets, the state will put the, that, that dollar amount in as to what we would expect in property tax collections.
Okay, so that's, that's really, that doesn't reflect the two referendums that were, were operating under the building or the, the last operating referendum, 350,000?
That will put, that will play a, a factor in it because we've had a, you did a one-time authorization to increase by 350,000?
Sure. And I don't, yeah, and I don't see that as another line item under the revenue, so it probably does reflect that then, doesn't it?
Right, right.
Mitch, what you're saying is that property taxes line is, is the levy applied per 100,000 to current property values in the district?
Right.
Correct?
But then, but then also you have to factor in, you know, a year ago, we were getting a much favorable valuation on the property. And, and I say favorable, that's favorable to the school district, not necessarily to the taxpayer because all my property was valued to be more money, so I have to pay more taxes. But yes, there is, there is that component as well. So yes, that, part of that is the mill rate, part of that is the percentage of property value increase that, that the state says, oh, you know, you should anticipate a 2% increase in property values or a 4% increase. That, that number we don't set. But yes, that mill rate increase would be part of this, yes.
And, and both referenda contribute to the mill rate?
Correct.
Yeah. So I'm just kind of, I'm kind of duplicating Larry's conclusion that it does reflect the referenda, both referenda, I believe.
Right.
And the $350,000 increase is reflected in the debt services expenditure from last year to this year. So we are, we are paying back more, more debt now.
Correct.
I have no other questions, Mitch.
Okay, we'll move forward to the budget update.
So a year ago, at this point in time through April, we would have spent about 70%, 70.36% of our budget. And if you look at this year, we have spent about 72%. So again, pretty comparable. We've been this way, you know, within about a percentage point or two for the last couple of years. So our spending habits aren't really changing. And a lot of the April things would have come with items that we would have sent in staff members, you know, prior to all of this other fund happening for us. You know, if you have budget monies that you know you needed to spend out or that you were holding on to, you know, let's get those processed before we get to spring break. So a lot of those things would have come into play. So, but very similar point in our budget expenditures from a year ago to this year. So again, I feel very comfortable, obviously, that I, I said before we would end with a surplus and, and, and you have graciously allowed us to use that surplus to help offset any kind of deficit for next year.
Any, uh, any other questions on the budget update? Okay, we'll move into the school addition remodel update.
Uh, so to, to Joni's comment, yeah. We, we had been waiting for subcontractors to get lined up. They're still waiting for, I believe I heard them say one or two subs yet. Again, part of the pandemic has caused the smaller contractors is kind of impacted their supply line. You know, if I'm a smaller plumbing firm or a smaller brick mason firm,
stone.
Stonemason, sorry. Stonemason firm, um, you know, I might be a small fry compared to another big company that, you know, might be looked upon as keeping the economy going a little bit stronger. So there have been some disruptions to some of the supply lines. I met with Eric, I believe his last name is Ports, is going to be the site superintendent. He'll be the guy on site every day or almost every day at the elementary school. They, there was a sample of what the precast walls will look like. And when I went down to the elementary school just to meet with him, there is a tree firm down there cutting down the trees on the north side of the property. So where the addition is going, there was a pine tree and a couple Pine tree and a couple of other standing trees that um have been taken down. In anticipation of them getting in and starting to do some earthwork. Um, last week I needed to jump on the. Zoning and planning committee meeting for the city of Interpoint. Everything was going along fine. Um, R A Smith, who has done a lot of the surveying down in that property. For us and for H S R for our project. Said everything was good to go. And then there was a question when they looked at the county. Uh, I believe it's the G I S maps. Still showed. That the Bennett property owned. A section basically a- as uh. One of the board members said, so is Jim Bennett teaching your second and third grade classes because it's on his property? And I said, no, I said, well, we had agreed to keep the charge to Jim Bennett down because we'd been maintaining that property for so many years. Uh, but on that county map, it just showed that for some reason this. This map showed that that was still part of the Bennett property. Even though all of the deeds show that. The sales have all been finalized, everything through the deed side of that property shows that it is school district property. So that was kind of just a little hang up. They wanted to make sure everything was. In line to get started, you know, so that they could sign off on everything. So. They have asked that we get the G S I map or G I S map, sorry. Um, cleaned up through the county. And get it all listed as one property instead of multiple parcels. Because if you look at the map, it shows, I think there's two parcels that make up the football field and about. Five parcels that make up the school district where the school building sits in the lower parking lot and and. Where some of the playground equipment sits, even though all of that had been legally sold, legally deeded, that map had not been cleaned up. So. Um, H S R and R A Smith are going to work on. Getting that map cleaned up at the county level, but the city zoning committee. Said, yep, we sign off, you're good to go. So. They have some equipment down in the elementary parking lot and I believe they will start. Uh, in the next, so once the trees are out of the way, they'll start moving some dirt and. Getting that north side addition, getting that ready so they can pour footers and get the precast order.
When when um, the folks go through the work of getting the county maps cleaned up. Are they going to ensure that the two new lots that were purchased, the the I the former Ivy property? That that's included? So it's all one parcel going forward?
Uh, I spoke with Mike Finley, who is uh, the chair of the of the zoning committee about that issue. And he uh, at the time. He had said that would be completely up to the school board to decide what to do. If you wish to keep it separate. There was nothing wrong with leaving it separate parcels and leave the zoning. Um, as is, uh, there's there's absolutely nothing wrong with doing that. So I think. I if if that's the board's wishes, we I can certainly relay that to H S R. The architect firm and R A Smith, the the surveyors and just say, we would like those two pieces incorporated in. So that it is all one piece of property. One parcel, one deeded piece of land, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
That makes really good sense.
Is there ever a reason that we as a school board would would choose to sell or disperse that land?
I said, I was just thinking, Joni, in the few, you could say forty years from now. If we ever do decide to put an elementary school up where the high school is now, who knows if it'll ever happen? Then you'd have to have that land resurveyed if you wanted to sell off them sections, which. I don't know if it makes sense or not.
Is it beneficial in any way?
Right, right, either way, has it been? The only thing it would do is it costs you a little bit more. Long down the road to have it, you know, surveyed back off as separate parcels.
I mean, it it feels like as a landowner, I want things clean and tidy. And so I would like for it to be a single parcel. But I it does make me wonder if there's a long term implication that that would have to jump through somewhere down the road.
Well, and let's hope it's a long time.
And and we could certainly leave it as is. And if the board wishes, you know, in a few years to add it, we could, we can certainly do that as well. I don't I don't believe in one shot, you know, one time deal with this.
I would also add that any future sale would require a survey anyway.
And if they're there, depending on, you know, if they're there, they might as well do it, right?
We certainly can, yeah.
As opposed to paying somebody to come back and. Charge, I don't know.
I would support Joni's suggestion to. Make it a single deed and make it tidy. I would support that. Uh, I guess my question is, would that be, these are ignorant questions, so I apologize, but I mean, would that be? A significantly added cost to the district to make that happen? And then my second question is, if we just left it as is in separate parcels. Do we have to pay more taxes by paying separate on separate parcels or is it, does it have any other? Financial or tax implications, whether we combine it as one or not?
We we do not uh, pay any taxes. Um. But I I think, you know, the city a- and there were several other gentlemen um, that were part of that zoning committee that. That kind of chuckled because they referenced their own personal properties that. Were not accurate according to this countywide map. Uh, I believe one gentleman referenced how according to that map, his property line actually went through his neighbor's house. And uh, um, Mayor Bastin was on the meeting and said that he didn't believe that there was anything. Accurate in this part because he lives right out the driveway of Ross Street. He goes, there's nothing over here on any of these properties that's accurate. To the property lines on this map. Um, I I think it's just a matter. What I think what the city is hoping to do that, you know, it may be slowly over time. Just have it cleaned up because, you know, we took this one on and said, okay, this is all our property. So we. We cleaned up all those lines and any kind of map. So if there was somebody to question. You know, okay, where does the school district's property end? There is one map that would have a clean version of, yep, all of this is part of the elementary school. It's part of the school district property. So I I think that's probably why the city was hoping that uh, and asking for us to try to clean that up. So um, is there a, is there a cost? Yes, there will be a cost. Is there a tax benefit? I don't know that there would be a tax benefit because according to the deeds at all, it is all school property, school district property. And therefore not taxable.
Okay, we'll look into the cost and if it's not something outrageous, I mean, especially with the the possible budget shortfall and everything that, you know. It's going to be tight. So I guess the high cost and. We just kind of push it off.
Yep, I can do that. I can investigate that, report that out to the board. Would that be okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Nate, check on any, or Mitch, check on any um. Advantages of combining them or I I would just talk to Mike Finley, Mitch, and and ask him um, how the board should handle that. Joni's question.
Yep.
Things had to be combined. I have no problem with it either.
Okay, I will do that.
And as long as you got him on the, when you talk to him, ask him about the uh, access easement into them to properties you bought off the Ivies and make sure that's all cleaned up too. We we did get access, didn't we, Nate?
We did.
Good.
We we will no longer have to worry about that because we would, we'll now own those Ivy properties and we own the access road into that. So that'll all be school district property.
Good.
So we don't have to worry about that part. Or are you referring to the others of the other street, Larry?
I am re- referring off the other street.
Off a center or off her cothorn?
The street that you live on, Mitch.
Okay, center, yeah. Yeah, there is, there still will be an access road there that that has to be there uh, to allow us into that property.
So we need to make sure that the easement is documented and included in in our paperwork.
Correct, Joni. And and whether the two properties, the two lots are combined with our existing school property. That's another question for Mike. I would say if if we want to leave them separate for any reason or combine them. They've already got certified survey maps on them. So I I don't think it costs a whole lot to combine them myself.
Yeah, that that property had been surveyed prior to us even getting started. So there should be. Accurate survey of all of that property. On hand already. It might just be a cost of. Getting R A Smith to duplicate that report and getting it to the county map, but uh, I will check into that.
Right.
Uh, any other questions on the school addition remodel?
I did have a, and I saved it for this instead of talking about it twice. Um, I did have a couple citizen communications. Um, expressing disappointment in um. They were disappointed in the architect. Um, I apologize for my ignorance in the process. I don't know when this should have been checked, uh, but they expected disappointment that this came up so late. And could have been costly to the district if the planning commission said we need to investigate this and pushed our start. Our start time back. Um, we have been working on the same plan for a while. Seems like something that shouldn't have been so late. Um, and they also mentioned that an older person on the um, planning commission said that getting information. From, now they said the architect, it may have been R A Smith, um, had been difficult. Um, to to get this thing handled. So I just want to pass that along that that was passed on to me. Um, and maybe just urge, you know, the architect to make sure all the. All the i's are dotted and t's are crossed so that we don't have anything that comes up like this that that could potentially. Move the finish date and be costly to the district.
I I would agree with that. I do know it. Um, Mike Finley and I had communicated a couple of times through email and when he sent me. A series of questions about some of these concerns, I just sent them right off to. Um, Tim at H S R, the architectural firm. Um, and I know Tim had copied me in his response to Mike. So I I. While I certainly agree, Andy, I don't want anything that is going to push this back. I I. H S R was going off of what R A Smith had shared with them and all of their investigations that. All the deeds were correct and proper. And um, for the zoning committee, they were looking at this map and things just didn't. Between the deeds and the map, things just didn't line up. And that was, I think, the biggest hang up for them. But. Um, like I said, last Wednesday, I I attended the meeting virtually and. I would say within thirty minutes, it was over and done with. Um, and there was approval, a unanimous approval for us to move forward. But. But yeah, we don't, you know, I would certainly think somebody with a lot of experience in these projects would. Be out in front of all of this as well.
If you bring up a good point, Andy. Maybe maybe Mitch, a call to, I don't I don't know if Tim could answer these questions for you, Tim Rupert with H S R, but uh. You know, certainly we, somebody has increased liability now uh, with uh, with the earthwork going on. Um, traffic in and out of the property and residential area. I mean, it's just an increased risk of of um. A situation, accident or whatever, and even possibly damaging streets um, with heavy equipment, cement trucks or whatever. I I know, I know the contractor will be bonded. But uh, better to ask these questions now upfront to know what we have. And then when something happens, we know the answer to instead of asking them if something were to happen.
I totally.
It would be the best way to proceed, maybe a call to the insurance company just to see what what the number is or what they're bonded for. And maybe the school should maybe just look into uh, an umbrella policy of a sort through the next couple of years.
When I, when I received the contract from. Kramer, I forwarded it on to Butler.
Okay.
And he has reviewed it. He's worked with Kramer's attorney.
Um, virtual learning update, approval contracts, school board resolution, Southwest.
Computer, uh, talking about our board agenda at this point in time. Anyways, Bob Butler, um, who represents the school board. Has worked through all of. All of the details and then we sent it off to. Uh, E M C Tricor, our insurance provider, to make sure that the district was covered. Adequately that the insurance risks were covered in the right places.
Okay.
So, uh, so right now I have agreement from um, John Gibson is our insurance agent, our representative. He's signed off on it. Bob Butler has signed off on it and Kramer's has signed off on it. So I believe. That we are adequately protected for anything that that would come up through this process.
Good. I I guess I'm, you're you're probably right. The the questions have been asked already, but uh. It never, it never hurts just to remind people, I guess.
Exactly, exactly.
I think along those lines, I'm sorry, Nate, I know we got a long agenda. I just wanted to, I I just wanted to make sure. You know, since people are starting to ask questions, we've got people on site doing some work. Um, are there any plans in the works to set up kind of a webpage or a central? Repository of information regarding this project so that people can go to it and get. All their questions answered, something that's updated on a pretty frequent basis. I know that foreign adult school district had a. Um, a pretty nice website, which I think was attached to their school district page. You know, showed lots of photos and kind of a timeline and um, you know, notices to community members, parents, students. Things to watch out for. Are there plans in the works to get that set up? And what kind of timeline are we looking at?
I will, I will work with uh, Joel. To help with us. I know right now, um, I just received a email. Earlier in the afternoon from uh, Bill Webb, who kind of maintains our website for us that. We were running out of memory. So uh, for for our webpage and our district web. Site, so um, we'll be investigating what we need to do there. But once we get that taken care of, we can certainly start to uh. Kind of post updates. Um, like you said, you know, pictures of progress and. And try to give as much information as we can as the project goes along. So we could certainly try to do that.
Can you hear me? This is Joel.
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, we have a webpage right now as it sits. It's got the plans and it's got all that stuff on it. So we can just continue to add to that. It's under the uh, referendum um, page on the website.
Okay, thanks, Joel. I didn't know that that was still a kind of a living document moving forward. I thought it was more just kind of a. You know, uh, relevant before the vote. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna continue to use that as kind of the central site for the. The for the project, I think that that sounds good as long as, as long as everyone's aware.
There's an offshoot of it. Um, I don't know if you have the website in front of you, but. If you go to the referendum tab and you hover over the twenty eighteen, it should pop up with elementary renovation page. So. The latest thing I put on there today was that the power is going to be shut off on Thursday. So otherwise, we hadn't had an update, I don't think, since. February with the latest plans.
Is is there an opportunity to rebrand that or to give that a greater level of visibility, knowing that this is going to be? Um, something that's going to be on people's minds or as as we make progress in. The process?
I think, yes. I think right now we've got our coronavirus stuff is kind of the front. Center of what everybody's seeing right now. But yeah, that kind of wanes in the summer. I think we can look at some other uh, layout opportunities.
Joel, why was it that you said to hover over?
Well, I'm not at my computer. I'm on the phone. But if you are on the computer. And then you go to the referendum, you should have two options. Is that correct? You have a twenty. And then there should be an offshoot there should pop up. Is it not?
So Mitch, it might be under twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
That's correct. You know, um, Joel, you might want to change the referendum tab to the renovation tab or. Construction project tab.
Right, I think that's the easiest switch. I had just left that stuff up there because there had been so many questions. With both referendums floating out there for so long about, you know, different issues. So. That'll be the easiest fix.
Okay, thank you.
So this was a pine tree. So this was a pine tree. Uh, this is the corner of Bennett's property. This was a huge pine tree earlier today. Courtesy of Angie Schubert and Ursay. Jane Barr took this. And then there were three trees along here, um, along this parking lot that they have, or sorry, a fourth tree down here closer to that the, the company made short work of. So just today, all of those trees have now disappeared.
Mitch, can we just verify, um, I drove by on my way home for the meeting. And everything is locked up now. The gates are closed and locked. Can we just verify? Only because I saw somebody using the gates around the track last week and got concerned that the visitors', uh, gate on the baseball field is also locked so that they don't have access to walk around the fence and get in through the visitors' baseball gate?
If you're, I believe if you're talking about the one, um, that comes kind of out of the parking lot onto the track?
Nope, right on the field. Cause you can still get onto the track.
Yeah.
So if you walk all the way around the track, you can still use the home dugout to get onto the field, that fence.
Yes.
The, the, the fence, the safety fence is in between the two, the two doors. So the visitor door should be locked. Or people, people will be able to walk around the fence to get in the, to the area where we don't want them.
I'll have Roger look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on the school addition? All right. We're going to move on to the alternative and the virtual learning update.
We, we sent out a survey a couple of weeks ago, um, really with the mindset around, we know how crazy this is. We know how hard it is to educate students when they're sitting in classrooms, um, every day. And then to, to try to educate them while they're at home and you're either using a, a handout, a book or, you know, a computer monitor, kind of adds to the distractions and, and how difficult it is on top of are the parents working? So they're putting in an eight, 10, 12 hour day and coming home and, and we're asking them to try to help or they're laid off from work and I, I'm concerned that, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't have time to try to help tutor my child because I'm not sure how I'm going to pay the mortgage or the rent or the electric or put food on the table. So that was really my motivation is I, I do not want us to overburden the families while we're going through this. So, um, in a survey, uh, all administrators had an opportunity to kind of review the survey before it was sent out. And then we reviewed the data that we got back. Um, and of course, you know, a, as averages play out, it, it seemed that there were probably as many families that it said, it seems like it's the right amount of work. My children are challenged. And the same number of families had said it's slightly more work than what maybe was recommended, you know? So if it was an hour for grades kindergarten through two and two hours for three through eight and three, uh, you know, we had, we had some families that said, hey, it's spot on. It's great. We had some families that said, it seems like it's just a little bit more. And then you had the outliers, uh, some parents who are like just so appreciative of you trying to maintain education and trying to engage my child to, um, this is crazy. The technology is not working very well for us. Uh, my students are spending an awful lot of time, um, doing work. Um, and it seems like it's more in my house than it might be somewhere else. So we had some of those outliers as well. So a, again, continuing to try to make adjustments, um, after we got the results back, uh, as an admin team, um, the building level administrators held, um, staff meetings to kind of share those survey results and, and again, with an eye towards trying to not tax the parents and whatever circumstances they're under. Uh, we don't want to pass this on to them, even though it may feel that way. Um, so we, we've certainly tried to maintain connections to students, maintain students connected to being engaged in their own learning. Um, a, and I think in talking to, to staff members, um, some disappointments, students who aren't logging on, students who aren't turning work in. And, uh, you know, you have that conversation with them and it's like, um, would that child have been any different had you been face to face? And then it's like, well, okay. Yeah, this is a student that I have a connection with it. You know, and maybe wouldn't have gotten this bad. Um, but you're right. I do have to, you know, I do remember having to make sure that I remind that student, hey, this project's deadline's coming up, or, you know, you're missing this assignment. And then I've had a lot, a lot of staff members share success stories of, of students who they were concerned about, who have really stepped up and engaged this process in a, in a way that has seen a lot of growth in how those students interact with the staff members and, and, and a level of comfort. I'll, I'll say, you know, sharing and participating because now they get to do it from home through a computer screen instead of being in a classroom full of my peers where I, I don't want to answer because I might say something that makes me look silly or makes me look like I don't know what I'm talking about. So I've, I, I've also heard from staff members, uh, who have shared those things. I think the one common thing I've heard from everybody though is that staff members, top to bottom, um, they wish they were back here and they wish they had kids in their classroom every day right now. Uh, and, and I've heard that a lot, that, that this is just so much harder than they ever anticipated and, and really wish that they could get back to normal. Um, grading, uh, uh, there's been lots and lots and lots of conversations around how to grade students. Um, my initial push for a lot of things was to make sure that if it's an essential learning outcome, that we make sure that those students know that. So that might mean that we back up and, and do some review because somebody maybe didn't understand this essential learning outcome earlier in the school year. Um, and then we can start to stretch it a little bit, but, but certainly not going through the curriculum as if kids were in the building five days a week and I saw them, you know, every class period. Um, but, but some teachers are able to kind of stretch and, and introduce a few new things in, in smaller pieces. Um, but it's a lot of pass and, uh, in, incomplete was, was kind of one of the final decisions. Uh, we don't want kids to just opt into the, well, I'm just not going to do it. So go ahead and fail me because in, in high school, that means they have to repeat that class because they need that credit for graduation. Um, so I know the teachers have been reaching out. I know Mr. Austin in the high school has been reaching out as the building administrator to, to students who may be missing a few things. Just to kind of give a reminder that, hey, you know, that this incomplete's not going to go away. You're not going to be able to walk away from it and just leave it there. Uh, you're going to need to finish this and, and get a passing mark. Um, and, and a great deal of conversation, um, what are different schools doing around us? A lot of schools are using the pass fail or a pass incomplete. There are a few school districts that are trying to grade everything as if the kids were in the classroom, um, every day of the week. Um, I, I think, I, I think there are some concerns that, that Google can find an awful lot of answers and Google can help do an awful lot of work. Um, and, and while that's a good skill to have, it doesn't necessarily mean I understand the topic or the concept. So I think that's why teachers were a little concerned about handing out a letter grade. And, and the technology component, the technology access for some students is maybe even non-existent unless they jump in a car and drive to a hilltop or come into town and pull in a parking lot somewhere where they can get onto wifi. So we felt it, it might not be uh, the right thing to do to grade somebody because, uh, I was turning something in on time and my internet connection is terrible where I live, or I don't have internet at all. And, and the, the devices that we try to provide because they're cell based, um, off of a, off of a cell tower, don't necessarily work in some of the valleys. Um, and we didn't feel it was, it was fair to, to have someone's grade be negatively impacted due to technology getting in the way. Um, so that it was, again, I said lots of conversations, uh, at the building levels. Um, but, but grades will be given as a, on a pass and incomplete at the elementary. It's more of a, here's what your students have mastered in, in their time with us. Here's areas that we feel they might need to continue to work on. Um, maybe not quite a, a long narrative, but, uh, there, you know, it, it is again, kind of around what is the, the essential outcome for the grade or for the curricular area. We have with, with your approval, I have filed the waiver for the hours of instruction. And, and the school district gets to determine in, in these circumstances. You know, it does not have to be an hour for hour equivalent. So if class is a 45 minute math class that you need to meet virtually for 45 minutes, but, um, the school district has the ability to say, yeah, we, we consider that um, as good of education as we can provide at this time. Um, so we won't necessarily hit the 11:37 for hours of instruction. But, but we are meeting the days and, and meeting the, the effort and trying to maintain the, the learning environment. So, um, basically just approve or filing the, the waiver for that, you know, is, we were told that that was a guarantee approval of that waiver. I, I, I'm probably in the same situation as all of you and including all of the people listening in and in the community. I have more questions than I have answers to, uh, and, and every time I attend another meeting, whether it's through.
Please go let Jacob know that if he's hungry, there's, um, um, chicken in the crock pot.
Angie, you're, you're not muted. Um, summer school, will there be any opportunity to have summer school? How can you have summer school? How will those minutes count? Um, will, will the DPI or will the state of Wisconsin, um, look at a hold harmless opportunity so that if we have, uh, in the past, if our summer school numbers typically average around nine students with the state legislature, just allow us to claim nine students for next year and hold harmless our, our budget. From everything I've heard so far, there is no interest in Madison to do that. Right now, the only way for us to hold summer school is doing it virtually. Um, and, and the, the meeting that I was on on Tuesday of last week, uh, there were a lot of other superintendents, um, and there is a chat feature in Zoom and every one of those superintendents, I shouldn't say everyone, but a great deal of those superintendents said, uh, my parents are barely hanging on to virtual learning now. If I have to do virtual summer school, there will be anarchy in my community and in my school district. And I'm worried that that might take for us. Um, we did have a conversation at our last admin meeting about summer school. Uh, I know Matt Manowick had said he would probably send out a survey, you know, if there's a way to do some high interest opportunities for summer school, whether it's, um, you know, some, some book groups or book talk groups or book circles around a particular reading or, um, so, you know, some kind of science or, uh, historical way to, you know, make kids do some research and be connected in something that maybe they wish to follow up. Um, he's going to try to see if there would be some interest. And the other thing we don't know is um, the number of minutes that you have to meet in order to count that student as a full-time student. And if you do it virtually, are you only getting to count the, maybe the 30 minutes that I've connected with somebody on a Zoom meeting? Or do I get to count that 30 minutes plus? I'm asking, I'm asking you to read for an hour tonight and we'll discuss tomorrow. And there's been no clarity as to how school districts would be able to capture any of those things. So, um, currently the law stated that if you were to run a virtual class, it was only to be set up for credit recovery and or graduation requirements. Um, the DPI has written an administrative rule that's been approved that would allow virtual schools to be used for elementary students and for enrichment purposes. Um, so they've allowed some flexibility, but there's still a lot more guidance that needs to be issued before we know what we can do for summer school and how we could offer it if we're able to offer it.
I have a few questions. Mitch, uh, do you have that survey data summarized so you can share with the board?
Um, I believe Joel had put it together. So yes, I would be able to get that out to the school board.
Okay. Uh, do you have, do you have numbers on what percentage of our kids or like, are, are you, are you, are you keeping attendance as far as how many kids are checking into their Google classroom every day versus not? And then, uh, um, I guess a couple of questions below that would be how many kids are struggling to complete their work because they don't have the technology to access what they need? And then how many kids have the technology as far as you know, but are choosing to not complete the work or unable to complete the work for other reasons?
I would, I would ask Mr. Austin or, and Ms. Dahl to, to share what they, um, what the information they have there online for the meeting. So go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, so we do currently make kids or we ask kids to check in every day on Google. I would say it's actually been going pretty well. Most kids, if they miss, miss it or they happen to forget it, they'll send me an email. Hey, I forgot to sign in. Can you make sure? And then it's a pretty easy conversation that way. Uh, but I would say majority of kids have done a very good job of signing in every day as we expect them to. Uh, as far as missing work due to technology needs, we have, before this all started, when this started, um, and you guys graciously let us do that practice day, we had sent out a survey about technology. So we hoped we addressed a lot of those needs. Um, you know, the biggest need is still at this point, internet. Uh, quality internet to every household is one thing that we need to look at a little bit more. Uh, but I would say most kids, if they have the ability, they are doing a pretty good job of that. And as Mr. Wainwright said, you know, there's always that select group that even when they were technically in school, they would struggle to get things done. So now it's even a little bit harder, but we really try to connect with those kids between myself, the teachers, uh, Mr. Paul Skil reaches out, Mrs. Zolrich reaches out. So we're really trying to connect with those kids.
Yeah. I, I think the teachers are doing it, um, a good job of contacting teachers, emails, phone calls. Um, unfortunately we have some students and parents that are not responding. Um, you know, we sent progress reports home like we do, uh, normally mid-quarter. Uh, so, um, some of the kids that are having trouble accessing the internet, we've been making, um, copies of the homework available and some teachers have been regularly dropping off homework to students, regularly picking it up. Um, I've told staff to keep records of, of everything. So, um, if we do get some incompletes, we'll know what students will have to make up.
This is Joel again too. Um, the survey results are on the coronavirus website. If anyone wants to view those, I think it's under the lunch information. Everything's on one page. So just keep scrolling. Um, those were, I think, also sent to parents and staff, but we're also planning on doing another survey as we wrap up the school year, just to see if any adjustments were made and what we might need to really work on. As, as Matt said, internet for one thing, um, if we're found in this situation again.
If I could chime in here, I'd just like to tip my hat to the, the teachers in the high school that do post their lessons or their homework in a timely manner in the morning so that everybody's plan knows what they're doing the rest of the day. I think that's pretty appreciated in our house for sure. I think that's pretty appreciated in our house for sure.
Thank you. I will relay that message.
Um, Joel said, in case we find that ourselves in this situation again, are we giving any thought to the fact that school may look different when we resume next fall? Whether it's social distancing or not being able to bring all kids to classes the same days? And what groundwork are we laying now to help teachers be ready for that?
Uh, so really, we've started to, we've started talking about that, obviously. I mean, that's a conversation amongst a lot of people here. Uh, I do know that it's one of these where we want to get through this next week and a half here, and then we'll really dig into that because we don't want to try and throw too many things on the plate at once. But I know myself, Miss Dahl, Mr. Wainwright, we've talked a little bit about what that may look like, how that may transition, but that's something we're going to dig into a little bit more. And I think we've talked a little bit about, you know, pulling a teacher team together to kind of devise a plan, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
The other issue that we're dealing with is if if we look at, if we look at the language of the Badger Bounce Back Plan that the governor's put into place, I I I'm going to venture a guess and say that school is not going to be a normal school year to start with. When 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 everybody I've get on these meetings with the people from the Wisconsin Department of Health are are looking at, you know, social distancing is going to need to continue through the summer, you know, through August. And um, I was on a a much more local meeting with the Iowa County Emergency Management and the Iowa County Health Department and I Highland is a charter school, the district itself is a charter school district. They always start in August and I I just came on and said, I it's, I know it's only May, but I have a waiver in place to start school early due to our building project. We're starting in August. What can I tell my teachers? What can I tell my parents? You know, that this, this is what we need to start planning for. This is what we need to start working on. And probably the most frustrating answer I get from everybody is there will be an update coming soon. So my my questions aren't getting answered and 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 I feel for the people that are trying to answer my questions because I'm sure the people that ask me questions are feeling the same level of frustration because I can't give them an answer yet. Um, but but I I am truly concerned that school is going to be so different when we start in August this next year. I'm just, I would like to get information as soon as I can so that, as you said, Joanie, the school, the teachers, the parents, the kids are all prepared to the best of our ability. And I don't want that information coming to me in in July when we have three weeks to to get ready for school opening. I I would like that information, you know, end of May, first of June to to try to start moving forward.
Matt and Vicki, real uh, quick, have have the Kajits been working for the students that have been using them? Are we finding that to be a a suitable uh, Wi-Fi source? Just thinking about continuing to pay for them in the future. This is probably the first time that they're used en masse. Um, how are they working out?
Uh, and Mitch could probably talk a little bit more about this too, but the Kajits have have their struggles, as does any technology. Um, what we've kind of figured out though is we may have a, I guess, better route. Mr. Wainwright, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, to kind of explore here, we uh, we tried a US Cellular version of it, and that actually seemed to work better. So the Kajits, they're serviceable, but they don't do a great job all over the place where the US Cellular version, we had a little bit better luck with in some different spots.
Yeah, and I I think Chris McCoy has done a really good job working with the company that we get the Kajits from because there were some problems and they were able to troubleshoot those, so.
Yeah, and I would echo those thoughts. She's done a fantastic job with that.
A- and and the 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 Kajit unit itself comes with one's inner or with one cellular provider. And there is a limited amount of data that can in essence, go through that Kajit on a on a day. The US Cellular device, because they have, they hold the state contract can provide for for basically the same dollar amount. I I would say probably ten times the amount of data per device. So a- and it seems that the signal strength we had, I'd asked for one to try. And we tried it in a couple of pretty remote places and and it provided very solid results. Uh, and of course, you know, every cell provider's got their weak spots and their valleys and their dead zones. But um, yeah, we're really looking at when this school year is over and this contract is up for the current service through the Kajits that we would be switching to a to this newer model, this through the US Cellular provider to to provide more data opportunities for our kids and hopefully better connectivity.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one other thing, Andy, just so you do know. We did, where we tried the US Cellular one was at, were also places that we had tried the Kajits and they did not work. So we did actually test it in a spot where the Kajit wasn't working, but the US Cellular part did.
Sounds great.
Okay, moving on, uh, we're going to go to action items. So first off is the approval of contracts. So before you in your board packet, you would have the the CISA three contract. The dollar amount for the for the CISA contract is thirty thousand four hundred and seven. That is uh, about a two point four percent increase from last year. CISA does provide some services that are are very, very important to us. Some of our distance learning um, opportunities are set up through through the CISA network. We used to be um, just five school districts in the Boost Consortium, and we were doing all of that work on our own as a separate entity. And now, um, while it's still, there's still the the Boost Consortium, it's housed underneath the CISA umbrella. So now they're more responsible for the maintenance, the technology, the updates. That's taken it off the school district's plate. There is the School Improvement Division that provides that, you know, for short, SID, School Improvement Division. They they provide meetings for building level administrators, offer some professional development and support for building level administrators. My professional assistance committee, the PAC meetings are are kind of under that umbrella as well. And there's a lot of great information that comes through there. We we need to be part of a consortium for a couple of different things. Carl Perkins money is grant money for career tech ed. And um, we need to have a consortium owner and CISA three fills that role for that. And then um, our English is a second language. I- if if we don't have very many students and or we don't get much in aid, which is the case for both, we need to belong to a consortium and CISA three provides that consortium as well. They provide a lot of professional development opportunities. They bring in a lot of good speakers. They provide in-house professional development, so they'll come here and provide professional development for our staff. They they have speakers that come to Fenimore. So um, I know several years ago, we looked through this contract and cut out a lot of things that we felt we didn't use or take advantage of. Um, so basically, the contract that you see before you are the things that we still know we need and use on a yearly basis. So I would recommend approving that contract.
It sounds like we're like approving a bill rather than a contract. I thought we negotiated a contract. I mean, is is there no room for negotiation on this?
Part of the negotiation comes with what services do you want to take advantage or do you want to add on? You know, uh, Jamie Nuttner try makes the claim that, you know, they're operating on the thinnest of margins. So it's not like the CISA is making a great deal of money. They they pay peoples. So
Well, my my argument is we are too, and why wouldn't they not accept no increase in same services? I mean, if we're truly negotiating a contract, why don't we have a counter? We're just accepting a bill here by this.
Mitch, I have a question. I compared this to last year along Doc's point. And the only increase is O and M. Are we contracting more O and M than we were last year?
It might not be. Go ahead, Angie.
So then Those services are dictated by an IEP, and so the contract reflects the the services that are established in the IEP.
So it's essentially a zero percent increase with s- slightly more contracted O and M than last year?
Y- yes, um, and it was either two or three years ago that we actually we stole the person from CISA and made him our employee and then shopped his services out to other school districts. Tim Baumann um, was that individual. He has since moved on. He doesn't work for CISA anymore. And um, CISA had picked up somebody that provides those services. So we're we're back to we, we need to purchase that service because we don't have it, something that we would need five days a week for a hundred and eighty day school year. We need to purchase that service through CISA.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract.
Second from Dunn.
Any more discussion on the contract? All right, Angie will call a question.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
No.
Deppes.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. The next thing are what are what referred to as sixty six thirty agreements. It's a an agreement between two different school districts and their boards. The first agreement we have is for a speech and language patholus pathologist. We have currently maintained this agreement with the Iowa Grant School District for the services of Jen DuBois. The last couple of years, the percentage has been eighty twenty. We have asked for and for twenty percent of her contract. This next upcoming school year, Angie Klein has shared with me that we would need to increase that. So we're going to a seventy thirty agreement. So uh, we need to get board approval from the Mineral Point School Board, and then the Iowa Grant School Board will approve this. I've been in contact with their superintendent and this works for Iowa Grant School District as well. The district total for Mineral Point uh, is on page three of that agreement. It is twenty eight thousand six hundred and eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. And I would like to point out that um, because this is a special deposition, there is funding that comes in twenty seven cents on the dollar. So Mineral Point, at the end of this current school year, will get back twenty percent of that reimbursement. And next year, we would get back thirty percent of that reimbursement. So whatever twenty seven cents is on the dollar, what our portion is, we would get, we get twenty percent back from Iowa Grant this year. Next year, we would get thirty percent of that back. So that that amounts to uh, some several thousand dollars that we would get returned to us from the Iowa Grant School District.
Still in that increase and is that included in the budget for next year?
Yes, it is.
Is the mileage cost split seventy thirty as well?
Yes.
And the travel time, is that is that time spent going back and forth? Does that come equally out of each school's allotted time?
Angie, do you want to talk to this? I don't know how often Jen actually would go back and forth.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we do a portal to portal. I think it's only mileage. Um, and then the time she's in the building. But currently, she works, she starts her day in our um, in our district two mornings a week. And so um, and then she's here until a about lunchtime and then she leaves. So um, I'm trying to think when she submits her monthly cost, if there is a portal to portal cost. I I don't think there is. I think it's only mileage we reimburse her for.
I'll move to approve the contract. Dunn.
Eisner will second it.
Any second. Any more discussion? All right, Angie, call a question, please.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Deppes.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes, sorry about the
Bush.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. The second sixty six thirty agreement we have, actually, two agreements. It's the sweep contracts. Several of you may have heard uh, this come up before. We are part of a a large consortium that allows us to do some volume pricing uh, and discount pricing on some products, uh, paper towels, cleaning supplies. And then um, we also have a us, an agreement that allows for the cooperative purchase and use of some rather large equipment, like an aerator and a top dresser and and a couple of other kinds of pieces of equipment that if one school district had to purchase that, uh, would be rather costly. But if that can be spread out, you know, six, eight, ten different ways, it certainly reduces the the cost for for all schools. Uh, we have been part of this consortium um, for many, many years. Normally, I would ask Roger to speak on it, but uh, you know, he he's not online tonight. But it it is a very valuable agreement for us to be in. There there is a cost for us to to be along to it, but it is um, pretty small in comparison to what would be the offset of us trying to purchase all the paper towels, all the toilet paper and all of the machinery that we use on a yearly basis. So so this actually, this provides us the savings. So I would certainly recommend approving both sweep agreements for the product and for the large equipment.
Deppes will make a motion that we approve Mitch. It, this is a good deal.
Sullivan, second.
Any more discussion?
Mitch, it is the cost of these contracts higher than last year and what's the, what's the total cost? I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, and I I apologize. I didn't have that. I just, we'd been asking for a copy. Iowa Grant holds the the holds the contracts, hold the agreements, and we didn't get them until late Friday afternoon. So um, we just tried to get them in. Angie is looking right now at the paperwork.
That's fine. I I agree. It's a valuable contract.
I can, I can find that and send that out to the board members and a comparison of what it was from last year to this year.
Thank you.
I I amend my motion. If there's no significant increase Mitch, I'm okay with it.
Okay. And I, normally the district would would notify us that, you know, something is going to jump up because we need to replace a piece of equipment and no notifications have come forward.
And Roger probably knows off the top of his head what the the cost is.
Right. Okay, well, we have a motion in a second. So any more discussion? All right, we'll call All right, we'll call the question.
Deppes.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Uh, next up is the athletic trainer contract. And speaking to the coaches, uh, the athletic director, um, there is a strong desire to maintain our sports trainer contract. With more specifically an individual rather than the service provider that he represents. There is a, a great deal of support for, for what Brad Vomsted does for our student athletes. And, and the services that he provides. So typically, um, we look at a year agreement. I had asked if there was a possibility of making this a multi-year in the hopes that it might save money on a yearly basis. They have agreed to at least put in a three-year agreement. Uh, in there, they say that the rate shall not increase by more than four percent. They bill from August to May. So when football season and volleyball seasons get started in August. Brad Vomsted makes his services available. That's through his contract. I, I do know, I can speak personally to the fact that when I was still coaching the girls' basketball program. Uh, we had some injuries in the summer at a tournament or a league game. And Brad was more than willing to be in the summer with the athletes, with myself. Nights, weekends, phone calls. So, so we certainly get more from the services than when we're paying for. Um, there was a very valid point brought up that, um, I would like the, uh, if, if there is a motion to proceed with this contract offer, I would like the motion to, uh, include that if Brad were to leave Southwest Health, who actually would hold this contract. That Mineral Point would have the option to break out of that three-year agreement so that we would not be tied to Southwest Health. If, I, I think I could speak for the coaches. If Brad Vomsted opened up his own clinic and called it the Brad Vomsted Clinic, I believe our coaches would want to use the services from the Brad Vomsted Clinic. Vicki, is there anything else you would like to share in terms of the training contract?
No, I just want to say that, um, we were not, uh, charged for April or May. And, uh, prorated for, for March, because obviously we did not use their services this year. Or the end of the school year here.
I'll make that, that motion, um, including the language that, um, provided Brad is still our trainer. I do think that language is in that, the contract. It says if the staff member providing the training leaves Southwest Health, we have the option to, to leave the contract.
I, I think that.
It says staff member. It doesn't say Brad's name, but it's probably not going to say Brad's name.
And, and I think the good thing is that we, we get to have Brad every day. It's not like we see him two times a week or three times a week. He's available to us, um, five days a week for training.
Sullivan will second that motion.
All right, any more discussion?
No, I just wanted to note that I do think we are really lucky to have a professional sports trainer like we do. And, uh, I just want to commend him for the job that he's done.
All right, we'll call the question.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Deppes.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes. Um, the next contract is for Renaissance Learning. Renaissance Learning provides, uh, our accelerated reader program. It provides star testing, uh, and, and star testing allows for math and reading. Testing and then, um, allows for progress monitoring. So we can, we can give tests throughout the school year so we can have a student take a test in the fall. And, and they get a, they get their score and their scores compared to a benchmark. Here's where the average third grader in September would score. And if we have students that score below that benchmark, we can provide interventions. Uh, and then we can use star testing to do some progress monitoring to find out, are we, are those interventions working? And are we moving those, those students in the right direction, getting them closer to where they need to be? So we do find a great deal of value in the Renaissance Learning suite of programs. Uh, we have made some cuts as well. In the past, the contract has been in the neighborhood of thirteen thousand dollars. About thirteen thousand, two hundred. And in meeting with the building administrators, um, and finding specifically what parts of the program get used in what locations, um, we made some cuts. And the grand total for this contract is ten thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. This will be, some of the surplus monies can be used to purchase this, so I'm not worried about the negative impact on the budget for next year. And, and it is a valuable piece of software. It, it, it's used predominantly middle and elementary school. There was some high school components. It, it just does not line up. Some of the star testing just does not line up well with the, the curriculum at the high school. The math test is a basic math test that just provides basic information. While my algebra teacher wants to know, I, I would like a test that's more algebra specific. And, and we have explored multiple things through Renaissance and, and they just don't have that product available yet. So we've scaled back some of the star testing components at the high school level.
Mitch, when I look at the contract in, that's out in Board Book, um, is that the, the previous one? It's still showing the thirteen thousand, two fifty-two.
Yes, yes, that was the contract I had. I'd met with the, the admin team and I sent an, a request to our local rep. And said, you know, we, we need to make these adjustments. And I just got the updated one, um, today in the mail and the email actually. So that's why that there's a discrepancy, so that the previous quote would have been dated, um, February twenty-ninth. It would have been thirteen thousand, two fifty-two. This one came in at ten thousand, two sixty-five. So just under three thousand dollars less.
So Mitch, just to be clear, I mean, this, this seems like a va- a valuable, uh, product, but, um, you said that this contract will be paid for out of the nineteen-twenty budget.
Correct.
But this, but it's only good for one year, right? So we'll have to approve this again next spring?
Correct.
Okay, so is this in the, i- is, is, is next spring's contract in the twenty-twenty-one budget?
We will be put, we'll be working on that and getting that in the budget. They did offer a three-year agreement. The three-year agreement. And I, and again, please don't take this wrong, only saves us about eighteen hundred dollars. But I couldn't, I don't know that I could find the thirty thousand dollars that the three-year agreement would be to pay that now. And then we don't have to worry about it for the next three years. I, I, I can find the ten thousand dollars and get to, get it taken care of for next year.
Okay, but is, is there, are there still some bills pending for this year? That might alter the amount of the surplus come, come June, July?
There will be some, yes. Uh, well, there'll be, um, some, you know, dependable solutions. There'll be, um, you know, some utility bills. There'll be a Taha bill or two yet. To clean up this here. So I mean, there will still be some, some of our normal bills that will still come through. But, you know, one of the things without, without running the buses is we're, we pay for the fuel. We buy the fuel for the buses, so we're not spending any money that would have been budgeted for fuel for the remainder of this school year. So I mean, there are still some, some small pockets of money that have not been touched yet. That may be moved around again to, to take care of some of these expenses.
Is the middle school, um, accelerated reader three sixty program, is that, is that a core part of the um, language arts curriculum? Or is that kind of like a incentive-based program to get kids to recreation, to read for enjoyment or read for recreational purposes?
Miss Dahl?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a core part.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The, the beauty is that, a- and it's unfortunate this year because it seemed like every year the number of words that were read. Chris McCoy does a great job putting that information up in the library on a bulletin board. And the, the number of students that have read a million words in the course of a school year, you know, it, it through the reading classes that are offered in the middle school and then the high interest level books that the library is trying to get in. We feel very good about what's happening at that middle school level. All right, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the Renaissance contract?
I'll move to approve the contract.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll call the question.
Bush.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Eisner.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Deppes.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Just quick going back to the sweep contracts, if you look at the financials that are in the back of the each contract, it shows what the revenues are. There's fifteen schools involved in the sweep program. And for instance, on sweep one, it shows what each school is charged. So I don't think the cost has increased over last year.
Uh, next up, the transportation contract. If you remember the, at the last, um, school board meeting, we talked about, uh, the potential for paying a percentage of the, what's called the home-to-school bus routes. Typically on average, looking at the bills, we, we pay about twenty-eight thousand, or sorry, fourteen thousand dollars a month. For the home-to-school routes. Several districts, uh, are paying. Some school districts are paying nothing. Um, some of the local school districts, Lancaster, Barneville, Fenimore, they own their own buses, so they're not, they don't have a contract in place. Uh, I believe the last conversation I had with Dr. Jacobson and Dodgeall, they, they were looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty percent. And then, uh, Darlington is paying eighty-five percent of their contract. I'm not a hundred percent positive, but, but I believe Iowa Grant is going to pay a hundred percent of their busing contract out. Um, when I spoke with First Student, all bus drivers have been laid off and are collecting unemployment at this time. If, if we looked at paying fifty percent of the contract for April and May, we would just, we would be paying twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, on, on average, it's anywhere between fifty to eighty percent of, for districts making a contribution. And again, this, this is tied to, um, the CARES Act and the educational support monies. One of my favorite words of this time is practicable. Um, you know, you're supposed to maintain your contractors as close to whole as practicable. So I, I know it was tabled and I was asked to bring back some, some of the percentages that area districts were using. Um, so I, you know, I guess we need to make a decision, or I would ask that you make a decision of some sort tonight. As to if you want to do anything and, and what percentage you would like to do as a district or First Student. And I guess I would, you know, i- if you, if you're looking to do something, I would, you know, whatever it is, maybe we want to make sure that we indicate that in this, in this agreement to pay X percent, we're requiring that you bring all the drivers back. That were driving for you prior to being laid off or something of that nature.
Mitch, uh, uh, can you help me understand? This CARES Act money. As far as I understand, this is money from the state legislature to schools. Who allowed to, to help districts maintain their current contracts with subcontractors. Just like our contract with First Student Bus. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's, it's money that came from the federal government in, in their two trillion dollar stimulus. Um, and then the state had to, the state had to take some action in order to, in essence, accept the, the state of Wisconsin portion to, to spread out to different school districts.
Got it.
And then one of the, one of the pieces around that, um, you know, what, what would Mineral Point expect? And it originally, we were, it was brought up that we would expect, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy percent of our Title I monies, whatever we get for Title I money. So this next year, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-three thousand. So we would get seventy percent of that as our financial boost due to the virus. But then, um, there are several school districts that are not title districts. And, and of course, then it's the, well, we've been impacted just as much with the virus as anybody else has. How do you tie, tie it to something that we don't get? So now the state of Wisconsin is looking at, do we, do we divide the money up equally? Do we divide it up on a per pupil basis? There's not been any true answer or true guidance as to how they will divide that money up. Other than what the original language was, was, you know, in that seventy percent of Title I monies. But, but that decision has to be made in Madison and it has to be approved, um, by the Joint Finance Committee before the state of Wisconsin can s- share that money. And then once we get the money, we have until, I want to say it's it's either September of twenty-two or September of twenty-three that we have to spend it out. And there, and there are a lot of things we can spend it on. Cleaning supplies, training, technology, in case we get hit with another virtual learning. You know, scenario, um, maintaining your contracts, all those kinds of things are all wrapped into that. The money that we would be getting as part of this package.
So what you're saying is Mineral Point is, is slotted to get an amount of money that is equal to seventy percent of our current Title I funds?
Based on, based on the language of the, that act, yes.
And you estimate that to be around eighty-three thousand dollars?
Seventy percent of that.
Okay. And it's meant to be used for COVID-related expenses, but it, it could also include maintaining contracts during the pandemic. maintaining contracts during the pandemic?
Yes, that's where the word practicable comes in.
So we're under, oh, sorry, were you done? So we're under no contractual liability to pay these funds. And no services were rendered to support us paying these funds. But we're doing this as a, am I understanding this correct? As a goodwill gesture to ensure that we have the opportunity to have transportation services in the future?
The, the act comes with that stipulation that you're to make, you're trying to hold your contractors as whole as practicable. That's what the language in the act says. Then when it gets to the state level, there doesn't seem to be consequences for anybody that doesn't, you know? There, there's nothing that says you have to keep them one hundred percent harmless. No one can give any indication of, so if you don't pay a hundred percent, or if you don't pay eighty percent, or if you don't pay at least fifty percent, this is going to be the punishment. Some of the money gets held back. There's none of that language out there to help clarify or guide any of the school districts. The, the other issue is that the seventy percent of that is like fifty eight thousand, one hundred dollars. We can use that to, again, provide, provide more training for what, what are better ways for us to, to teach virtually, to, to provide better equipment for our students to take so they can connect digitally? Do we buy more cleaning supplies that we can use to make sure we're disinfecting? Do we train our staff on cleaning? Do we train our staff on, you know, virtual learning? We have a lot of flexibility. We could buy, you know, if we needed to buy more Chromebooks or laptops or whatever, we have all of that flexibility in how we spend that money. And then the state of Wisconsin is saying, well, okay, you might get the fifty eight thousand, but you might get something less because we've got those school districts that don't get title monies, but have been harmed by the COVID virus. So we should try to provide some money for them as well. So again, a lot of, a lot of questions with no answers coming from anyone that you would hope would have answers.
I'll say this, I reached out to Mr. Schmitz after our last meeting. And Mitch, I know you said you were going to talk to First Student. And I was told the same thing. You were told that the drivers had been laid off. At that time, Mr. Schmitz told me that he was basically doing all the yearly year end maintenance on the buses that would be done at the end of the year. I have a hard time supporting paying eighty percent of this when the buses are sitting and not moving. I'm also not a fan of just turning a cold shoulder to the company. So I don't know, I think fifty percent is reasonable with the, with the higher rehiring of the drivers. And I'll make that my motion.
I'll second it.
I guess I just think fifty percent is too high without knowing the amount of money we're going to get. You know, I think Darlington's a different situation. I think they still contract through Al's Trucking, which is a local company, not a, you know, an international company who's trying to sell their busing division at five billion dollars. You know, this company's not hurting. If we're getting, if we're getting the money from the state, I have no problem giving them a portion. But I also don't think, you know, their bus payments are fifty percent of our costs. I mean, they're not paying drivers. They're not, probably not paying insurance. Insurance companies have refunded, you know, a lot of people for, for less driving. I, I just, that seems really high, you know?
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all.
A month ago, we were talking about, you know, not putting technology into classrooms because of the situation we're going to be in and some other things we could use it for. And I just, you know, we didn't get charged by the hospital for not having any services provided. It just, I'd like to wait and see what we get from CARES and if the money is given to us, certainly, let's, you know, take care of the companies. That's what it's intended for. It sounds like we may have some technology purchases to make due to COVID with the US cellular devices. It just, if this was, you know, Mineral Point Bussing operating out of, you know, High Street or Ridge Street, absolutely, the money's going to stay local. This money's going to go to Britain. You know, I just, I'm not for it.
I, I'm struggling with the-
Until we get the money from the state at least.
I'm struggling with the idea of fifty percent as well. And I go back to, you know, no services rendered, the employees are laid off. Our budgets are tight. I, I think we should do something. But fifty percent of those fees, paying fifty, a fifty percent rate when people are laid off and, and there's no services being rendered, that, that's a big, a big bite out of that. I think that we should look at something more in the, you know, maybe in the twenty five, thirty percent range.
I'll withdraw my second to the motion.
Joni and Andy, glad to have you on the board. I couldn't agree, I couldn't agree with you guys more. I mean, we got to look at this from a different point of view. There's, there are a lot of people that, that are suffering economically. And the, the drivers have been made whole. I hope they have with, with the unemployment program. From what I understand, nobody's taken any hurt there on, on the medium paid jobs, I should say. Who knows what First Student is getting through, through the other stimulus package? I, I simply don't know. I say we put this on the back burner for another month or two. Well, it'll, it'll shake out. We may be, our hand may be forced. If we want some of that CARES Act money, maybe we'll have to come up with fifty percent to get, it'll just come in one hand and out the other. But at this point, I can't support, support this. If we want to give away twenty eight thousand, hey, let's go down Main Street and give every business a couple of thousand bucks. That, that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah, it does feel like a charitable donation. And if we're going to give, give it away, there's other places we could put that.
And First Student haven't, they, they have not been the cheapest busing company out there either. I think they've been underbid and we've always went with them because of, because of Todd. He does, he does a great job for the district. So you, you could look at this a couple of different ways, but it, it may poke its head back up in a month or two, then we may have to, to deal with it. But I say for right now, I, I will not support twenty eight thousand for two months.
I, I will say this. I, I will say that this, this needs to be a decision made in June because this money is in this year's budget. You know, we had budgeted for all of this transportation. And this money would come out of actually this year's budget dollars. If, and we wouldn't necessarily have to impact that CARES agreement, whatever money we get from that, because the money is in this fiscal year.
What you're saying is if we don't, if we don't spend it, we won't get state aid next year for it?
Well, i- if you don't spend it on the bus company on this transportation, then I would ask that you spend it somewhere else and/or put it in Fund Forty Six so that it doesn't get withheld from us the following year.
I see. Okay.
Can you refresh me on what Fund Forty Six is?
Fund Forty Six is for capital maintenance projects.
Thank you.
You had to start this project and you couldn't spend any of the money for five years. And our fifth year is, the end of our fifth year is in July of, so of twenty here. So this summer, we can actually use that Fund Forty Six money for replacing the, the main driveway that's falling apart in front of the middle school high school. We're going to use some of that money for that.
And the best part of that, Joni, is when we put that money into Fund Forty Six, we can, we collect state aid on it the following year, correct Mitch?
Yes. Yeah, as if, it is if we spent it out that year on something for that year. Yes.
Yeah, I'd much rather put it into Fund Forty Six until we have answers on CARES. You know, if, if there's some large communities, because Title I goes by income levels, correct Mitch?
Y- yes, that has something to do with it.
There's some large, you know, if there's a Lake Geneva out there, that's a large district or, or districts in, in financially sound areas that aren't, are Title I zero. And now you get large districts brought into play. Our percentage could, could drop significantly from seventy.
If, if I may, gentlemen, I do want to withdraw my motion. The reason I made that motion is I assumed fifty percent was the lowest that we could bid. I certainly agree with every comment that has been made. So if I, if we can withdraw a motion, I would do that. Otherwise, just defeat it in a vote.
Well, the, the second was withdrawn.
Yes, Dr. Lindsay had withdrawn his as well, his second. So now is there any, the only thing I have on this, do we have, when do we have to get back to First Student? As soon as possible, have they, they, when it, when it's on a board agenda? I know Andrew Peterson is like Todd's manager. So he has been in contact with Todd and Todd lets know that it's on the, the board agenda. So I will talk with Todd in the morning and then he'll communicate with Andrew at First Student to let them know that nothing took place at tonight's meeting that basically it was tabled for, for another month. So my concern is, members, is we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. And I know we're waiting for some answers, but you know, eventually, you know, we have to make this decision. So I know hopefully we get some answers in the next couple of weeks, but I'd say we're, you know, kicking it far enough. So, okay.
When do you expect to, to know whether, how the legislature is going to vote on these Title I funds to non Title I schools?
I, I don't have any indication. The last meeting I was on with Mike Thompson from the DPI was that the federal government with the, with the state legislature acting to accept this money, now there needs to be an application that schools have to fill out, but no application has been created as of yet. So I, I don't know. And then they have to get approval from the Joint Finance Committee as to how they disperse the money. So they have to create the application for school districts to apply. And then they have to, they have to create the rules for spending the money or sending the money out to the districts. And I, I think I have another meeting there. I'm having weekly meetings with Mike Thompson, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools for the State of Wisconsin, is having a weekly meeting trying to update us on as much information as he can. So each week hopefully gets me one week closer to get an answer on some of those, some of those items.
How long is our current contract with First Student?
This is the end of year one in a five year agreement.
So basically, you know, if, if we leave First Student hanging, they're still contracted with us for the next four years?
That is correct.
Or even if we pay them nothing, they're still on contract for four more years, correct?
That is correct.
It makes sense to me to wait as long as possible until we know whether we're going to get reimbursed for this payment or not. And it's, it seems like the deadline is not a First Student created deadline, but really a budgetary deadline that we have to spend this money one way or another, you know, by June. Is that accurate?
Our, our fiscal year ends June thirty. So yes, we would need to, we would need to take care of the money in the budget for nineteen twenty in some way, shape or form before the end of the year, before the end of the fiscal year.
Doc, we can add this to the finance committee. Andy and I can. And maybe come up with a little more information for the board before June's meeting.
Yeah, it would just essentially become transportation surplus that we could vote on moving to Fund Forty Six. Because we, we don't have a scheduled revenue for the CARES amount in next year's budget yet, do we?
No, we do not.
So were we to get it and getting an increased revenue, we could then approve, you know, a certain amount next year. I'm sure if we tell them next year that we're going to, you know, we've got our money, we're going to attempt to make you somewhat whole. Here's some money. I'm sure they're not going to give it back.
I would highly doubt that.
Yeah. And I, I just want to, I mean, I, just to underline Gary's concern about the bus drivers. I, I, and I, I do think Larry's correct that, given the current criteria for unemployment insurance, I, I think those bus drivers are being made whole as they are currently laid off, unless I'm, unless someone's here to heard something different.
I, I don't know of anybody that is getting the additional six hundred dollars per week yet. I, I have not heard people on, on unemployment that are getting that extra benefit, which is part of the stimulus package as well. So I have heard several news stories that the Department of Workforce Development is supposed to make people whole back, you know, and backdate things back to April. But I don't know if the extra six hundred dollars has been coming to people on unemployment as of yet. I have not heard that.
Well, I don't like kicking the can either Nate, but I, I think that there's too many questions here and not a lot of support for this, for this recommendation from Mitch. So I move that we table this issue to the June meeting with the understanding that it might get more, more deeply analyzed at the finance committee meeting.
So anybody want to second that?
I second that.
Okay, Don?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
We are going to, can I have a motion to approve the credit card statement and the bills payable?
I'll make that motion, Sullivan.
Second from Don.
Any discussion, concerns, comments?
I have, I have a question. Sorry. Mitch, how much money would you estimate that we have spent on, that you could say would be, would be considered COVID related expenses? Whether it be disinfectants or virtual learning supplies or anything that would qualify to date?
I could probably get you a, a better number tomorrow. Between myself and Marcia, we are, we are keeping bills that are directly related to, to COVID. It, it's well into thousands of dollars. But I, I don't, I couldn't give you an accurate number right now. It would just purely be a guess. But we, like I said, Marcia and I have been collecting all of the bills and purchase orders in one file so that when I get some direction from Iowa County Emergency Management on how and when to apply for the FEMA monies, I would have, I would have that, all of those things together in one place and I can just get it done in one easy go. But I can get a dollar amount tomorrow. I can send that email out.
Sounds good. I, I think just having it by the finance committee meeting would be sufficient, Mitch.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All right, we'll call the question.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
All right, into Employee Services, the approval of staff hires.
You could do this one at a time. You can do this as a group. Mr. Renwick is online and he can speak to the fifth grade and first grade candidates. And Ms. Dahl and Mr. Austin are online and they can speak to the middle school math and seven, twelve English language arts position. And I would turn the floor over, let's turn the floor over to Mr. Renwick. And why don't you talk about your fifth grade candidate and your first grade candidate?
Sure. We hired our fifth grade candidate first or offered the job and verbally accepted. Chelsea Allendorf was a student teacher in our building my first year in the building. Student taught under Lori Heimsaw. Um, my first year in the building, um, stood taught under Lori Heimsaw and was, uh, well regarded at that time. Has found different employment in different school districts, uh, namely DC Everest and Wanakee and in both districts was, um, well recommended and she's now coming back to the community. She's from the southwest Wisconsin area and is currently transitioning to Mineral Point and, um, uh, we're excited to have her as part of our team. Um, and this will be her fourth, coming into her fourth year of teaching. Jessica Suits comes from Platteville where she has taught kindergarten for seven years. And, uh, similar things to say about this candidate too, just, um, highly regarded by her colleagues and supervisors and uh, we're just a fortunate district in that we are attracting this, you know, kind of talent. These are both very tough decisions. We had uh, nice candidate pools in both positions and, um, there was more than one candidate that we would like to have pulled from each position, but, uh, we're, we're pretty satisfied with how it, uh, came about.
Ms. Dahl, you want to speak to the math teaching position?
Sure. Uh, Carrie Cabot, um, she's probably a familiar name to some of you. Um, Carrie, uh, worked for Mineral Point for a, a number of years and then wanted to get back into the classroom and went to Iowa Grant and was teaching science. And she really missed Mineral Point in the district. I don't want to say, say too much, but sometimes when you have a position and you think the grass might be greener um, and then, uh, it turns out that it's, it is not and you want to come back to, uh, the district that you were teaching at before. Um, Carrie did her student teaching under Mr. Chambers. Um, although she has not been teaching math, uh, as of late. Carrie's technology expertise and also her, um, online learning and her personalized learning experience will fit in well with our middle level education. And in our interview committee, especially our math teachers, uh, really were high on Carrie because they obviously will be the ones that will be doing a lot of collaborating with her.
Well, can I, can I, uh, she has no experience in teaching mathematics, that's correct?
From student teaching, she has the experience, but she has middle level education, experience, teaching. Um, some middle level educators are certified five through eight in, uh, different subjects. And Carrie taught science for the last two years over at Iowa Grant.
And if I can add, Vicky, anything?
Yep, yeah, go ahead.
She was, she was in my building before I make you up and I came over and she, so she did the library sciences and, um, technology uh, courses. We, um, we actually had hired her for fifth grade, but that's when she um, jumped to Iowa Grant because that's where her family's from and had, and, uh, I, I concur with everything Vicky shares. Uh, Carrie's a terrific candidate and we're lucky to get her back. And, uh, I believe she's a, originally an engineer by trade.
Yes, she's got a background in engineering and that certainly helps with math.
Yeah, yeah. So she's got some, some of that kind of, uh, unique, unique experience, which I always appreciated. Um, especially when she worked with, uh, integrating technologies in the school.
I, I think too, if you look, I don't know if Mitch, um, printed off the resume, but she's, she's interested in, in coding and you know, we have our makers club at the, at the middle school. We, we just think she's really going to be a good fit for us at our, at our middle school. And with, with her online learning experience, you know, our middle school math curriculum, especially eighth grade with, with Apex, that is an online learning curriculum. And with, with her experience, that it's going to be really beneficial there.
Vicky, what, what was the applicant pool like, oh, for the, uh, middle school math teacher?
Is that something that I can share, Mitch?
Uh, there were fourteen applicants. So I don't, I don't know if you were looking for more than that, but, but I know there were fourteen applicants for that math position.
All right, okay, I understand. I'm, I'm just, uh, I'm a little uncomfortable. We, we got a candidate and, and I, I, I agree. I, I think she's been an asset to Mineral Point, but with limited math experience. Hard to believe she rose to the top.
Well, we had three experienced math teachers on that interview committee. And she was the number one choice.
Yeah, and I would echo those thoughts. She, uh, she really stood out. I think she'll be a great addition for that and the technology background with the times that we're going through and the uncertainty with next year, I think is a big asset to our, to our middle school and to our district as well.
And, and plus, this group of kids that is coming into the middle school, she has background with these students. She's worked with these students in elementary. If we start the school year out with virtual learning, she's already going to be able to make a connection with those kids.
I understand, Vicky. I mean, through the summer, if, if she's approved, there certainly are opportunities for training, mentoring, I mean, getting caught up with, uh, the math curriculum in, in our school district, correct?
Exactly. You, you can, you can bet that if she's approved tonight, that I can guarantee you, uh, what she's going to be doing tomorrow. She will be, she will be, will be contacting Mike Chambers.
Okay.
Hey, Vicky, uh, speaking of Chambers, was he in on the interview committee? I'm just curious.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Mitch, may I ask, uh, I see you got her starting out on step, uh, step eight with a masters?
Yes. She, she, she comes to us with that, with that level of certification. And it, it basically is a match to the current salary that she's receiving in Iowa Grant.
Which is what, Mitch? You, you know that.
Uh, fifty-four, six sixty-six.
Okay. So you took into account in her, her experience outside the math, uh, her math experience?
Correct. Her, her teaching experience, her experience working in the school district, yes.
Have you ever hired a teacher like this before, Vicky, with, with limited experience in a core subject?
I would say in my, as my experience of middle school, uh, principal, we've been fortunate enough to have, uh, teachers who have been here for most of their career.
I can, I can speak to the fact that I did. Uh, he's currently on your screen on the bottom. If you're looking at the same Brady Bunch uh, file that I'm looking at. Mr. Austin had no teaching experience. When I hired him, he was fresh out of college. Um, and according to my daughter, he was one of the best hires I ever made. So, um, you know, anybody that's brand new into teaching is coming with no experience. So, you know, you, you are doing those kinds of things as well.
And, and I would add there to, you know, we have a great, uh, support system, great mentor system that works really well, um, you know, and, and as Vicky said, tomorrow she'll jump right in if she's approved here and there won't be any hesitancies. She'll be, she'll be caught up real fast back with the math curriculum. I think she'll do an excellent job that way. But, you know, we have a lot of good support and a lot of good teachers in the district that will be willing to help and get her to that level if we need to be, so.
Yes, I, yeah, the three, three experienced ma- math teachers, you know, that were on the interview committee, uh, that I, I take a lot of stock in, in what they believe is, is going to work.
And I believe, you know, she does have middle school experience. I mean, she knows what she's getting into at the middle school level. So uh, you know, she, she has math background. She just hasn't been teaching math.
Right. I mean, even with teaching, you know, middle school science, you're going to be using your math skills. Quite honest, sometimes I don't know why anybody wants to teach at the middle school level, but you know, it's, it's great that we have people that you know, enjoy middle school kids.
Absolutely.
And I think, uh, you know, part of the benefit perhaps is that, um, you know, Mr. Chambers was way out in front on, on Apex and I excel in some of those things, um, and has the system in place. And, you know, if, if you go hire, um, somebody with five or six teaching years of experience and no technology background and their own program, maybe they're trying to come in and, and get us away from that. And, and that seems to be something we've had extreme success with. Um, so, so I think we have the benefit of, of she's going to stay on board with, with the program we have in place. The students are going to understand um, you know, those, those programs that they're using now through virtual learning. Um, and I think we have to, uh, given the, you know, I think we have to give the benefit of the doubt to our admin team here a little bit. Um, several of our recent hires, um, were recognized by outside organizations um, as, as award winners this year. Um, or awards or whatever you want to call them, recognition. They've received honors. So, so they've got a pretty good track record of, of hiring recently.
Well, and I think too, Andy, when you're in an interview process, you want, you're looking for somebody that's going to be a good fit with the staff that you have. And we feel this person is going to be a good fit down in that middle level.
I have a question and I, I apologize if it has already been said. What's the highest level of math she'll be teaching in middle school?
Eighth grade.
That's just eighth grade math. It's not algebra or anything.
Seven, right, seven, seventh and, seventh and eighth grade, um, your Apex curriculum is more, is it like pre-algebra?
Okay, okay. So, um, yes, one other teacher, the, uh, seven through twelve, um, in the language arts, arts teacher, uh, Matt and or Vicky?
Yeah, I, I can speak a little bit about, uh, Dalton there. Dalton was a, he stood out amongst the candidates there. He was very, I think he comes with us with a very good track record. He has some connections to the district already as he was doing some of his special ed, uh, certification stuff. He actually was in the middle school here and there and he actually has a connection to Jason Smith. When Jason was in Lancaster, Dalton did some pre-student teaching with, uh, Mr. Smith as well. Uh, I think he's going to do a fantastic job, brings a lot of energy. I think he'll, he'll really get kids in his corner when he goes down to the middle school level. And I think he'll help out at that high school level too, because he's very, very approachable. Anything that I had heard from uh, contacts that I had reached out to, they, where he was at previously, they said they'd be very disappointed to lose him, but that he was a fantastic guy and fantastic person to work with. I think he'll be a very good fit for our school.
Yes, I would, uh, I would echo what Matt said and he was done at our middle school level for some pre-student teaching and in the classrooms. And I know especially he was in Mrs. Brown's classroom and uh, she was, uh, very, um, complimentary of him and really is going to enjoy having him in the middle school too.
Real quick question, um, and this is just because I don't know the answer. Um, he's currently provisional license seven through twelve. Is that just because he's newer and that will become a, he won't lose his nine through twelve licensure?
No, provisional is just the first license that you get when you become a teacher. So he only has
So he'll always be seven, twelve certified. So we won't lose the multi-building, um, benefit that, that this position
No, seven, twelve. You just, you get a provisional license now for, I think it's, I want to say three years now, but provisional and then after three years or after, it used to be five years, you get your professional license.
Okay, thank you.
Like a temporary period with licensing.
We vote on these individually?
Yeah, yes, individually.
So specifically regarding the, um, the, the ELA position. So this is the newly added position that we talked briefly about earlier. But Mitch, can you confirm for me the budget numbers that we looked at, at the be, earlier on in the meeting? It included the approval, the, the assumed approval of all four of these positions, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. If you, if you look in the board pack, if there's some handwriting on that preliminary budget sheet and up there, it will say four new staff with basically their salary and insurance or benefits that is included in those numbers.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would anybody like to make a motion to approve the grade five teacher?
I'll make that motion, Sullivan.
Oh, Stefan?
All right, we'll call the question.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Congratulations, Chelsea. Welcome to the team. And now to approve, do we have a motion to approve the middle school math teacher? Carrie Cabot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would second that.
Okay, we'll call the question.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Just learning my mute button system here.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Welcome back, Carrie. And
Thank you.
Yeah, um, okay, a motion to approve the seven through twelve ELA teacher.
I'll make the motions, Dunn.
Sullivan second.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Once again, they, thank you for the support. We appreciate it. We'll put those new staff members to good use.
Vicky, your, your school has been a highly ranked school, so you're going to keep it that way, right?
Um, I'm gonna do my best.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to, uh, hire the grade one teacher?
I'll make the motion, Sullivan.
Heisner second.
All right, we'll call the question.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Heisner?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Deppes?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes. Congratulations, Jessica, and welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Nate, I'd like to make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to, uh, thank the administrators and, and whoever was involved, you know, in selecting these candidates. I guess, oh, I, 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 more importantly, I want to thank them for coming on tonight and kind of explaining to the board why they feel strongly that these should be the candidates for our district. I feel like, um, you know, we as a board, you know, we invest a lot of money in teachers and I think we owe it to ourselves to make sure that we're making the right decision when we're spending this kind of money. And it's helpful, you know, since we're not involved in the, really the selection or the interview process, it's, it's helpful, at least for me to know that, you know, our staff and administrators that we trust to make these decisions come to us and really state their case and maybe give us a little more insight into how these candidates were selected. I know Mitch, uh, sent out the resumes of the candidates, which he said is kind of non-traditional. know Mitch sent out the resumes of the candidates, which he said is kind of non-traditional. I, I don't know the best way to reassure the board that these candidates are the right ones for us, but I know getting, you know, live testimony from the administrators is extremely helpful in making these kind of decisions.
Dr. Don, thank you. And I would just add to that too. Yeah, I have no, I welcome the questions and wanting more explanation about qualifications and things like that. I think that's a good thing. And I think too, Mineral Point has such a strong reputation that we continue to get really strong candidate pools, people who come in with unique experiences and skills. And so just having that reputation, the results to, to, to verify it just continues to kind of perpetuate, you know, success. So thank you to the board for your support, is what I'm saying.
I would agree with that. Thank you.
All right, next meeting date, Monday, June 8th at 6:30.
Hey Nate, nice job tonight. Make sure we get Pledge, Pledge of Allegiance next meeting.
We did it, Gary.
We did.
You were just late, Sullivan.
Yeah, you were, you were like sleeping or daydreaming or something, Gary.
Couldn't get, couldn't get the other one to work.
The ex-mariage.
Everybody's a critic, Nate. Everybody's a critic.
All right. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yep.
There we go.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Stay well.